Session, please rise. Debbie McGee, read the, I mean, leave the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everybody would please silence their phones, our invocation will be by Reverend Richie Ware.
Please bow your heads for a moment of prayer. Father, we seek you for guidance and wisdom, and we seek you for a blessing upon these men and women of our city council. Father, we ask that you would help guide them, Father, and we ask for a blessing upon our city and a blessing upon our individuals who live here. And God, I ask, Father, that we would always thank the best of our community for the decisions that we make. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Richie. Thank you. Hey, if everybody would please silence their phones. I'd like to welcome everyone, and we'll go ahead and have roll call.
Councilman Phillips, present.
Councilman Nettie.
Present.
Councilman Durham, present.
Councilman Frank.
Here.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilman Nobby.
Here.
Councilman Montgomery.
Present.
Okay, we have enough for a quorum. Do you have the minutes of September 16th? Is there any additions or corrections? Does Malley entertain the motion to pass as presented?
Oh, move.
We have a motion second, to pass the minutes of September 16th. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Now, I'm going down, and I got a proclamation here to read. Let me take off my glasses, go ahead and read better without them, so. City of Connersville proclamation to all to whom these presents may come greetings. Whereas downtown, by virtue of its definition, is the city of Connersville's commercial, cultural, historical, political, and geographic heart of our community, and whereas many organizations and local citizens have taken a great interest in our downtown, and whereas though these groups and individuals, our downtown now has been improved by businesses, wayfind signs, benches, lights on trees, murals on buildings, banners on light poles, planters on the corners, and the creation of green space such as the oases, and whereas more events are being held downtown, parades, the farmer's market, apple dumplings day, fall festival, street concerts, movies playing at the oases, and winter fest, just to name a few, and whereas our downtown is becoming more of our community gathering place and a reflection of our community's image and pride, and whereas there are many activities planned down, I mean, during the downtown development week in Connersville, and I would encourage everyone to attend. Now therefore, I Harold Gordon, Mayor of the city of Connersville, am proud to stand before you today and hereby proclaim October 7th through the 12th as Downtown Development Week, and encourage all citizens of Connersville to observe this week in ways appropriate to its significance. In testimony thereof, I have hereon set my hand and cause to be affixed a seal of the city of Connersville on this seventh day of October in the year of our Lord, 2019. It's got my signature and Rosemary's signature. Okay. Dan? I'm putting him first, get him out of the way.
Oh, I appreciate it, Mayor. You're a good man. I appreciate it. In front of you, I've placed one of these little handouts entitled, "Unique opportunity for businesses for Connersville, Fayette County, and surrounding counties. The Economic Development Group is now taking application for qualifying businesses that may want to expand their current size or establish a new location in Fayette County. We will consider all businesses large or small. EDG will gift 2.68 acres of land to the most qualified business plus possible financial assistance. The land to be given away is in the Airport Industrial Park at 450 North and State Road 1." And to share your information, this is not part of the 58 acres that the city owns across from Gordon State. The winning business entry will be judged on initial capital investment and short-term, long-term job creation. Businesses that are interested should contact EDG 765-827-1366 to submit a business plan outlining business history, financial history, future business goals and strategy, long- and short-term capital investment plan, long- and short-term job creation plan. We're looking for a business with real staying power and for long-term growth potential and sustainability. There are other conditions and terms that will apply to the winning applicant, and those conditions and terms will be outlined as EDG meets with businesses that apply. We would like to name a winning business before years end with the expectation of a groundbreaking slash construction start before April of 2020." So, that is it for me. I'm trying to get all the Channel 3 exposure I can get on this because I want as many people to hear this as possible, and then with each of you and your business contacts, people that you can talk to and tell about this opportunity. If you go to Snyder, Beekman Snyderman, you can see where this thing's valued at around $32,000 bucks. So that's, that's $32,000 bucks a business would not have to spend to start either a new branch or a new opportunity. Shucks, I've thought of a doctor's office, dentist's office. It could be anything on this, two and a half acres. So that's it for me, unless the council has a question.
And you were talking, this also got three entries. You can have three entries.
It is. It's corner lot. It's probably one of the nicest lots in the industrial park. It's not in the floodplain. So, Dave, you have a question?
Trying to look which one. You've got a full map. Is that, is that corner right there? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Outline in blue.
Yes. It looks like there's a, I think it's labeled industrial avenue that goes up through the middle of the town. That is not exactly correct. It's that whole lot, yeah. It looks like it's split in half, but it's not. That's just the name that goes up through the middle. I think at one time that there were plans to make an industrial avenue. You got industrial drive to the, to the east avenue.
That's all there.
But that never materialized, but it's still on the, on the maps.
Is that near the nephrology place?
Say it again.
Is that near that nephrology place?
Yes. Yes. It's just, just a little north of it. Yeah. Is that it? Thank you, council. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, going down to item A. Diana?
Okay, I'd like to present for approval a possible council appointee to the Urban Enterprises Association. This would be to replace a vacancy by Chris Carcy. And we have approached Teresa Isaacs, and she has agreed to take this appointment if it suits her pleasure. And Teresa, could you stand up so that? Is she here?
She's not here.
Oh, I thought you said she was here.
Oh, no.
Okay, sorry. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Okay. So I guess we need to take it to a vote?
Yeah.
And that would be you to call that.
Make a meeting.
Oh, I'll make a motion. Or should I? Maybe somebody else should.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we accept Teresa Isaacs as a council appointment to the Urban Enterprises Association.
Motion second. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Teresa's got it. She wins. Item B. Dale.
First, I want to apologize to you for not giving the information to you sooner, but we just received our last bid this morning. What I'm asking is, we'd like to ask for additional appropriation from, from the Riverboat to put our doors in on the south side of the building, and by doing so, it'd be three bays, three more doors added on the south side, which would give us four doors, and the lowest bid was mid-east machinery mover at $36,142. You want me to read off the other ones?
Is there any questions to Dale?
So is that going to replace the existing door on the south side?
No. This would be added to.
So you have four?
The four doors, that door stay, and be three more.
So is that all going to be doors then across that south side?
From the door that's there now, east, will all be doors.
And it's still quality door that you'd want to keep it?
Yes.
Okay.
There are insulated doors that would go back in. The one that's there now, it's not insulated, but they think we can put styrofoam inside it and make it insulated, and then reseal it.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
You might want to comment that all of these have met the specifications of the drawings by Timmerworth, each and every one of them.
HPH Engineering designed the layout that is needed to do this, which is Timmerworth, and the prints have been sent to every one of these, so they were all, got the exact same prints, same everything.
Dick, you want, you want to talk to the, about the EMS now?
Yes.
That's what you come for? I'm limiting you to five minutes.
I won't get started. About a half hour, maybe an hour. I'm Richard P., and I notice Rosemary's 35. I'm 95. So you got a ways to go here. I know some of you on, on here. You probably know me. I went on the first aid unit in 1956. I went on the fire department in 52. When they started the first aid unit, Callie Porter was chief of the fire department, and they wanted two men to volunteer to transfer to the first aid unit. I volunteered, and Charlie Hines volunteered. He's no longer with us. In fact, I'm the oldest retiree from there. I was the first one on it. I was talking to Mr. Munson, and I understand that right now they have to put two ambulances in one bay because that's the only one, the doors will work, that they can get in with. Well, that's all right, but I got a problem with it. Suppose they get a call, and first ambulance don't start, so they got to stop and take the time, push it out the door and get it out of the way, and then make their call. In their job, it's seconds that count. That time they take to push the ambulance out, somebody may die. Might be one of your family. You don't know. So you need to get the doors up. Not next week, or next month, or whatever. It's going to be winter. We need to work and get them up now. Now, I could talk here for two or three hours on the first aid unit. I helped start it. We went out, we collected the money, we bought the ambulance. Bill Stein and Mike McKenna done a lot, a lot of legwork to help raise that money. And we got, finally got it. We took it everywhere in Fayette County and collected donations to buy, worked on the ambulance to help buy equipment for it. Before we got the equipment that we needed, I remember one call I was on, and the lady had a fractured left arm. We didn't have any splints, and I used a, as I was telling Dave, a Collier magazine to make a splint on her arm so we could get her to the hospital. It worked, but then we got some money and bought splints. But the doors, you've got to get them up, not a month from now. I'd like to see everybody vote yes. That's it. If you vote no, you got to come back next week. Somebody else may decide they want to vote no. You come back the next week. You don't know how many people could die over something like that, really. And I could go on and on about that, but when we started it, we didn't get big pay, really. We didn't get overtime. If Charlie got sick, or I got sick, he came into work, and he may stay 24 hours, that's what our shift was, or he may stay 48 hours, or 72 hours, whatever it was till I could get back to work. One of us had to come in. We made the trips to Indianapolis in emergency. The doctors would request the ambulance to go. Well, if, we usually had a part-time job when we was off duty, but we came in as soon as they called us. The fellow that was off, he came in and worked till the ambulance got back in service again. We use an old Pontiac we had there. Probably some of you have never seen that, that Pontiac. We had a Cadillac. It was a 56. And I run that, I was on there, let's see, 17 years, and I come down with asthma from smoke and stuff from the fire department, and so they wouldn't let me stay on. I had transferred back to the fire department because I was worried on the first aid unit that I would be out on a call, and this asthma attack would come up, and I couldn't do my job. Somebody may lose their life. So I transferred back to the fire department and was there a short while, and they told me that I was unable to do the work of a first-class fireman, so they put me off on pension.
Your five minutes about up, Dick.
All right.
Your five minutes is about up.
I know, and I can't, but I could talk on here for hours on the first aid unit and tell you what all went into fixing it, getting it ready. People donated everything, time and everything. And now all we need is for the council here to vote yes on the mayor's idea here, and we can get on to the doors. The men working there are trying to do the work inside on their time, so I'd like to see you all vote yes. I hope you never need the ambulance, but it's nice to know it's there. And the people on it now, they wouldn't let me ride the back bumper because of my experience of, what I know is nothing to what they know. So they're, they're good at their job. They know what they're doing. So help them out.
Thank you, Dick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're asking, we're asking the council for the permission to request to advertise for additional appropriation.
From Riverboat?
From Riverboat, yes.
And the amount of?
$36,147?
Forty-two.
Two and two. 142, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
I want to thank you for go. Is there any reason, do they say any reason why there is such discrepancy amongst the bids?
That I can answer?
Going over, going over, Dave, it, it looks like it's just all immaterial in labor. It's really the only place I can find.
But there's huge discrepancies.
I know. You can go through it, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah.
I read it through three times, and I.
Like I said earlier, we've sent identical stuff to every one of them, so. We did have two companies that bowed out not to, to bid on it.
That's amazing. The difference is amazing.
I even challenged the warranty part of it, and it's, it's right with what the drawings are calling for, so.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion?
And this is just requests, right, for advertising?
Yes. I'll tell you what, let's do a roll call, though.
Councilman Frank?
Yes.
Councilman Bishop?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yeah.
Councilman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Yes.
Councilman Nettie?
Yes.
Councilman Durham?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dale. Thank you.
Thanks, Dale.
Okay, going down to item C. Virginia? I called her Teresa logo. Sorry.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Virginia Mace, and I want you all to know that I appreciate the time and the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm here today because I own property located at 1716 East Street. On June 13th, well, actually, I received a letter from Dennis Myers that was dated June 13th of this year, and in that letter, he informed me that the property was in violation of city ordinance. After receiving this letter, I called Mr. Myers to discuss the situation with him, and in that conversation, he told me that as long as he could see effort was being made in the cleanup, that he would take no further action against us. So he said he just wanted it cleaned up, so we began the process of cleaning up almost immediately, spraying all the weeds and hauling undesired contents, with our first load being taken to the city dump on July 3rd, 2019. On July 11th, Mr. Myers created a work authorization form that he sent to the police department. In that authorization, he stated and acknowledged that we had in fact began cleanup, but had not cleaned up the side or the back of the house. He stated that there was a lot of junk and some very tall weeds. Although I did not see this authorization at the time, because it was an internal form, it is important to note that this authorization was created 28 days from the date the original notice was drafted. Not the date that I received it, but the date it was actually written. The offer, the authorization was very likely sent just two weeks or so after I received the notice, and was told by Mr. Myers that as long as effort was being made, he would not take further action. I feel as though he was not truthful, and neither did he act in good faith. He did in fact issue a work authorization on July 11th, all the while knowing that cleanup efforts were already being made, and only two weeks had passed. Regardless, for whatever reason, the work authorization was not immediately acted upon by the city street department, and so of course we had no knowledge that it even existed. So we continued cleanup efforts throughout July and August. The weeds were all sprayed and killed out. We cleaned up trees and bushes, as well as taking in additional nine loads of undesired contents to the transfer station. On September 5th, Dennis Myers sent another work order to the police department and the street department, requesting them to clean up trash, junk in the yard, and quote-unquote "office chairs" on the front porch. Then on September 23rd, without warning or notice, additional warning or notice, the street department sent six people, two pickup trucks, a dump truck, a loader, and a trailer to the property to carry out the assigned work according to the cost sheet. I'm assuming you all have a copy of this cost sheet. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes. Before I go any further, I am curious, do you guys also have copies of the pictures dated June 4th, August 29th, and September 4th?
We got them all.
Okay. Okay, perfect. As I started this journey almost two weeks ago, my main goal in coming here today was to dispute the $3,323 bill that I received, and I would still like to do that. However, at this point, I'd like to turn my focus to a little bit of a bigger issue, one of dishonesty and the abuse of authority. I'd like to go through a few pictures with you today, and I'd like to start with number, I don't think it's up there. I'm not sure why these pictures were not sent electronically to be displayed on the screen, but if you'll look on your pictures, there's a picture very similar to this picture.
What's the date?
It would have been dated September 4th.
September?
September.
Is that the one where the bicycle?
Yes. Yes. And when you find that, I would have loved to have it on the screen, but again, those digital pictures were not sent. It's keep going as a paper. There's, there's something in between it.
Oh, there it is. Oh, I got it. Sorry.
This is a before, a close picture of the area beside the back steps, taken according to Mr. Myers on, by himself, on 9/4. You can clearly see that there's not a concrete step there. There's, I don't, I must have dropped that picture, but. Inside. It's very similar to this one. And this one is in fact a picture taken by the street department, the day of cleanup. This is, according to Mr. Myers, a before picture of the cleanup.
There it is, right there.
See if that what you're talking about there?
This one here?
Yes.
That's the one that's really the shameless there.
Actually, no, there's another one that, yeah, that you can see a little further in, and you can see that.
This one here, is this the one you're talking about?
Possibly, yes. Yes. Yep. Okay, so in picture number three, that I have marked as three, and again, I wish it was up there, but it's not. You can clearly see that there's a concrete step right here. Okay. Now, all of these have been depicted to me by Dennis Myers as being the four pictures. The first being by Mr. Myers, and the others taken on the day of cleanup. But this picture is actually not a before picture at all. This is an after picture. And you know that because you can see the concrete step that the city knocked off of my back porch, sitting here in this picture, and it was not there in, in either of the other two. Which means that the city street department knowingly left this area untouched, and then used the picture to mislead and misrepresent the truth. Now, here's a picture showing the same area from a distance.
Same date?
Yes. These, this is taken by the street department as a completed job. And again, I'm sorry that these weren't on the screen, because it would have been much easier if we could have just put them up there and then other have you guys sifted these.
And Virginia, when you, when you brought that to my attention, I did send them back over.
Okay.
And take that down with no charge to you. But when they got there, that tree and everything was already been removed. Did you know who removed it?
The tree has not been removed.
So where did the, what, where did the stuff go? Who picked it up?
My husband.
Okay. Because I said, because they said when they took them, when they went back, it was gone.
Yes. But here are pictures I took of that same area the day after they marked the job complete and issued a cost sheet. If you don't mind, go into picture 455 and 467. job complete and issued a cost sheet. If you don't mind, go into picture 455 and 467. Conveniently, though, it was hidden in the shadows of this picture, picture number four. You didn't see any of that mess, because they stood back and they took a picture in the shadows, leaving, making it appear as though it was nice and cleaned up, when in fact it was not. Which I believe was an intentional act in an effort to misrepresent what was actually done and manipulate the truth. Also, I would like to look at picture seven. And I'm sorry that your numbers don't correlate with mine, and that you have to sift through these. I really wish that whoever had these controlled these pictures, because these are pictures that I got as copies. They should have been able to easily have transferred them over. I'm not sure why they didn't. But...
What is your point about those pictures you're holding?
Seven, eight, and 17. Well, I'd like to point out that these pictures are kind of, at first glance, they look bad, okay? But if you notice, this area, this whole area that's showing all of this debris is only about half the length of the shed. And you can see the shed in these pictures. If you'd like, I can just walk them up to you, but, if you prefer. But they're about half the length of the shed, which the shed is 15 foot. And you can see the bottom of the shed. So, really, what we had was an area at best of 13 by 18 with trash scattered. You can even see ground through these pictures. You can still see the grass. You can see sticks. You can see weeds. I mean, it may look, and I believe it's intentionally made be that way, but it's actually just an area of about 13 by 18 feet. And like I said, you can still see the grass through these pictures. I don't know if you can see those. Can you see those?
The camera's seeing them too.
Oh, good, perfect. And I'd really like to, this picture even shows it even better, because you can actually see, all of this is just ground. This is shadow that's casted, but it's actually just ground. There's no debris here at all. It's all past the steps and over to the barriers.
Nothing.
The trash that you see in these pictures is equivalent to about one barrel of trash knocked over and scattered around. Again, pictures that were taken to intentionally manipulate and misrepresent what was actually there. Now, here's a picture of, this is picture number nine. This picture right here represents the majority of the work that was still left to be done. But these four pictures combined, I want to make sure I got them pretty close here, essentially shows a panoramic view of the entire back and side yard that is in question, and also the amount of work that was actually there. Are you guys being able to see these? I'm not sure if you can. Did you guys see these?
We're trying to match them up.
Yeah, you know, I tried to come down this afternoon and do that. However, the pictures that, and I'm not sure if it had been Dennis Myers, he did not send these pictures. He sent other pictures, and so I was not able to actually correlate them so that I could present this well. So, I'm sorry, you'll have to bear with me. I apologize.
What do you mean, he sent other pictures?
He did not send these pictures.
To who?
On that screen.
To who, yes.
To the media, or to this meeting. I mean, they're not, those pictures are not these pictures.
Are those your pictures?
No. These are pictures that actually, Carol McQueen made copies of.
Do you have a copy of this picture?
Yes, I do. Actually, I think that was, I just showed that picture. And if you'll look at that picture, and I'm glad you brought that up, because if you'll look closely at that picture there, you'll see that all of this right in here, from the steps here, is actually grass. It's actually weeds. This that's in the shadows, that's not trash. That's actual bare ground and dead weeds, where we had sprayed the weeds to kill them out. That's what that actually is. It's about right here that trash starts, that's there. And I think I'm going to miss my 15-minute mark, unfortunately. I'm sorry about that to you.
These are ones from 9/4.
Let me ask you a question.
If you don't mind, I really would like to get through this, and then I'll be happy to, because I am on 15 minutes.
Okay.
Okay? And again, I'm sorry, and I appreciate it, but...
That's all right.
So, anyway, let me get back to this. I feel as though sending six people to clean up this much trash was excessive, extremely excessive. Not only did you send, not you, as in board members, but the city sent six people, which according to the mayor was, I think he said, half of the...
Just about half the crew, yeah.
Half the crew. They sent a loader. They sent a loader to clean up an area that was essentially 13 feet by 18 feet. And it took them five hours to finish it. I think it was extremely excessive and unnecessary, especially when you consider that it took them five hours to finish it. And according to their documentation, it took them four trips to the dump, disposing of seven tons. That's 14,000 pounds of trash and debris. I would like one of you, any of you, to explain to me where you see 14,000 pounds of trash in this picture. Because this picture really is about all there was. There was a brush pile behind the shed, and there was this mess.
You've got one of many pictures that we were given.
That's okay. That's okay. Because I'm just saying, this is it. This is it.
Okay, what, I have some here that is in different...
And again, I really wish that these pictures were sent. I really, to hear it today.
We've got lots of pictures.
Okay, okay.
They're in the back there, right here.
Perfect. I'm glad you do. I'm glad. I just wish they could have been on the screen and you could have followed me a little.
There's more trash than what's in that picture. We have...
These are your pictures.
I agree with you.
We have other pictures.
Okay.
We have more.
Okay, that, yeah, I have them too. But let me get through these, and we'll go through them. And I'll be happy to show them to you.
Virginia, we got a busy schedule.
I understand. I understand. So, common sense to me tells you that there is not 14,000 pounds of trash there. Now, what did they take that weighed 14,000 pounds? Well, I asked Daryl Morehead the same thing, and he said, I really, I'm not sure. I really don't know. Where did that weight come from?
I think the yard was...
Was it dirt?
Two trips to the compound.
I mean...
Here's a fine example of one of the pictures, excuse me, that you're not showing.
Oh, no, no. I'm so glad you showed that. Thank you very much. Because that is actually the June 4th, before I got the ordinance. And all of that had been cleaned up come September. Every ounce of that was cleaned up.
Trash bags and all?
Trash bags and all. As a fact, if you look through here, you'll see a picture of what?
Well, the one, I think the picture that you showed us was from August 29th. The one you showed us.
It may have been.
And in the back of the back.
It may have been.
And this is there.
These are nine.
Yeah, August 29th, he did go back about a week later. Yes, that's the brush pile behind the shed.
Is this your property back here, too?
I can't see that.
It's not. And then there are pictures, I mean, there are a lot more than what.
Right, right. Well, these are pictures that I pointed out, took out of your package.
How many tires were hauled?
That we personally hauled?
No.
No.
We hauled.
There were 21 tires.
Where?
That were taken to the transfer station on the 23rd. That in and of itself was a violation.
There was not 21 tires there. Now, I know there was not 21 tires there. And again, that's, there was, I seen three tires in these pictures. If there was 21 tires there, you can see bare ground. This trash was not covering anything. There was not a stack of 21 tires on this property.
You know, sometimes when a property looks like it's got, it's fully trashed, people will throw their tires in.
Okay. You see this one? They could have been in and around that. This was taken, these were taken on 9/4.
They could have.
How do you know what was under there?
Or, because, that's another good question. I'm glad you thought of that. Because, I tell you how we know what was behind that. Those were from where we cut the trees down, and we stacked the brush pile up there, and it just hadn't been hauled away yet.
And, well, I mean, and here's a tire.
Yeah, there was, there was three or four tires left. We ourselves hauled.
And there were tires in with these, in with this. That was also a 9/4.
Yes, I said, there was three or four that I could find in the pictures. Yes. Okay, so...
And this pile between there and here. Is anybody from the street department here?
No. I just got Tom here. I got Tom here.
Okay, Dennis isn't here, and Daryl's not here?
No, he isn't. Because Tom, he's the one that took all, he weighed the trucks and counted the tires that come from this location.
No, they did not. But they're not anywhere in these pictures. We took 15...
I'm not just picturing right here.
Yes. Again, that was June 4th, and we took 15 tires to the station ourselves. That was June 4th. That was before we started cleaning it up. We cleaned those tires up. Look, I don't know what they took that weighed 14,000 pounds, but I can tell you it wasn't trash, and it wasn't junk. Was it dirt? Because they did literally take dirt out of my yard. And you can see where they scooped it out from the ground with their scoop, and they hauled it off. Or maybe they falsified documents. I don't know. What I do know is there wasn't 14,000 pounds of trash here. Now, let's move on to this picture. Picture six.
I don't have a number for this picture.
This picture is kind of one of those irritating pictures to me, because this picture was actually taken looking south through the back wood line, okay? Which means that they actually stood inside the wood line. They stepped in the wood line and took this picture through the trees, which is not even my property. But worse than that, it's being used to misrepresent and represent the yard. All the bushes and the trees had already been cut down.
Can I see that one? Because I know I saw a picture of that, and there was a line that indicated where your property line, that's not the one.
Right, no.
Where your property line was. That was indicated on pictures we received.
We, yes, we did. My husband, as we went down, he did say he thought it was approximately right here. So, yes, there is one there. I don't have it here today, but you do have This was taken through the wood line. These bushes and trees were not in the yard. This picture was taken looking through the wood line, which means that they actually stood in the wood line and took this picture through the trees. And it's being used to represent the yard. We had already had all this cleaned up. As a fact, this picture shows...
Okay, can, may I ask you a question? And I asked, when I talked to you the second time I asked you this question, when you called, you called and talked to Dennis one time, right?
Oh, can I please hold your questions until I'm finished with this representation, please? So that I can get through what I want to show you.
We don't have any right to ask questions as we go along?
Well, could you, can my time be extended so that I can accommodate those questions?
Yeah, we got, we got a lot of work to do.
Right.
And that's why she's asking, is if she could have her full 15 minutes.
Yes.
How long has it been?
I don't know.
It's been 20 now.
So, well, I've had a lot of questions, and I'm sorry. So, let's move on. This picture shows what was left of the brush that had not yet been hauled off from cutting everything down. Now, these pictures, 16, 18, 19...
Our pictures aren't numbered, so...
And 20. I know, I'm sorry. But I'm just, these are my pictures. These are actually your pictures, but the ones I'm presenting today. These were literally how the house looked when the street department showed up, with the exception of the front porch. But yet, they were taken as a representation of how the city street department left that property, which again, I believe was an intentional misrepresentation and manipulation of the truth. This picture, 21, again, these are your pictures. I'm sure you'll find them in your packets, dated 9/4 at 10:55 a.m. This shows the office chairs on the front porch, which had never been removed. But the street department was expressly directed by Dennis Myers to remove them. Why?
Why do you work with?
They were on the porch and in their proper place and should have been left alone. They also should not have removed the barrels that were in the backyard, as they were useful items that were not broken down nor destroyed, nor the tomato cages that were made out of concrete reinforcement panels, the decorative shelving unit on the porch, or the grill that was very much like what we have in Robert's Park, which was installed in the ground as a permanent structure. Also, in my opinion, they should have left the brush pile alone that was located behind the shed, creating what could have been the beginnings of a compost pile, which is not ordinarily considered to be against ordinance. Not only did they take things that were not commonly considered to be in violation of the ordinance, but they damaged my property in the process. They knocked the bottom concrete step off the back porch, trying to use a tractor that would not fit in this area. They also left a nice-sized indention in the yard from removing dirt from the loader scoop, which, if you don't mind, show 504 and 463. You can see where the step was there at the bottom, and now it is sitting beside it. And then 463 will show the indention, just one of them, that is from the loader scoop. Which, you know, by the way, I did, I forgot to mention that dirt weighs between 1,700 and 3,000 pounds per cubic yard, depending on the components of the dirt and the minerals in it, which could very well be where 14,000 pounds came from dirt. They took dirt. They knocked off part of the concrete sidewalk out of place, which, if you look at 491 and 494, you'll see that. It's actually there behind that, but there's a better picture of it. And took the post hole, the post holding up my panel of privacy fence. And if you'll look at 9, which actually is, it's still, it's shown right here even. You'll see it's there. But in 495, there's a hole where my fence post was. I was also dismayed at the fact that trash and debris was left on the premises, in some cases untouched, as I showed you earlier. In others, it was simply pushed to the back wood line and left there. When the city street department marked this job complete, we were still in violation of the city ordinance and was still charged $2,323, as though it had been cleaned up, when in reality, it was not. They came, they damaged my property, and they took items that they shouldn't have, which constitutes theft. And not one of you city officials have held them accountable or responsible for that. Now, here are more pictures of the property that what it looked like the day after they marked this job complete. If you'll show 455, 456, 58. If you'll show 455, 456, 58. This is what it looked like after they were finished.
Would you've wanted them to spend more time and charge you more money?
460, 463, 464, 467, 468, 478, 481, 82, 83, 88, 89, 496, and 504. This is the trash where they pushed- they pushed it through that opening, that was 13 by 18 opening that we talked about, to the edge and pushed it back to the back wood line and left it there. Now, this ordinance is nothing more than an extension of this type of abuse of authority, as it is quite literally a wild card that the city can use at any time, for any reason, at their sole discretion. It is actually- it actually allows for harassment from neighbors, police officers, and city officials with no force of action to dispute it unless we go to the very ones that violated us. This is a circle that goes from the city council to the mayor, who delegates authority to the city police department, who delegates it to the ordinance enforcer, who then delegates it to the city's street department, who then takes it to the city dump. And when issues arise, they are taken to the mayor, who defends the decisions of his employees. That, my friends, is corrupt and an abuse of power and of authority. Not only is Dennis Myers and the city's street department wrong, but so is anyone that condemns this and refuses to hold them accountable for their actions. Dennis Myers should've never sent the street department there to begin with because we were making a good faith effort and a continuous effort to clean this up. But the street department should be held accountable for their theft, for their failure to clean up the trash and debris and the damages that they've done to my property.
Now, Virginia, you come over and you talk. And you talk to Daryl. And he sent a crew back over there to clean, did he not?
Um, I don't know. I was not notified of that. I was not notified-
But you and him talked?
Well, I've talked to a lot of city officials that haven't really kept their word. So I, you know, did he say that? If you're asking me if he said that, that he would, he did. He did say that.
You just said that you've talked to city officials that did not keep their word. Would you be specific on that?
Mm-hmm. Dennis- Dennis Myers.
Because I told you I would call you back. And I talked to you twice and I did call you back.
Dennis Myers told me that as long as there was- that he could see that there was good faith and that there was an effort made.
Okay, that's my quest- that was my question that I asked a little while ago. You called him- you talked to him actually between June 4th. And this is, I had a conversation- I had a conversation with you. And you said that you talked to him initially when this letter was sent the first time, when you received the letter.
Yes, I'm not sure exactly.
And I asked- and I asked you how many times you talked to him after that and you did not.
No, that's- that's true.
You only talked to him one time.
Absolutely.
And I have a note that was made by the dispatcher, but I also said that it would've been prudent of you to have kept contact with him. And you ev- you- let me find that. Where you agreed that you would keep in contact with him.
No, I never agreed that I would keep- no. We had a standing agreement that as long as there was progress being made-
Well, you kind of have to, I mean, I think-
Well, I mean-
And like I said, hindsight's 20-20.
Right. But let me go on. Let me- I'm almost done.
No, we really- so what is it?
I know, but I'm finished. I'm almost finished. Please, just give me five more minutes. Five more minutes. So, at this time, I would like to just take another minute or two to show you just a few pictures. If you would look at 648 and just kind of start streaming through those. These pictures are a pair of properties that either belong to the city of Connersville or the Connersville city is responsible for taking care of. And these are pictures that I took just last week.
And where'd you take them at?
I took those at the Little League. Those are all- those are dugouts that clearly haven't been mowed in, you know, all year. Because they're- you can hardly see the dugouts for the weeds. So, I want to close in saying that two things. Good leadership will lead by example. Who's going to violate the city for their ordinance violations? And Mr. Gordon, I agree with you when you said that just because you're poor doesn't mean you have to be dirty. That is true. However, I also want you to know this. You can be a politician and still be honest. And I may be forced to pay this fine. However, that doesn't make it right in any way, shape, or form. The city's street department damaged my property. They did not clean the property. They left it in a city- in violation of city ordinance. And I had an ongoing agreement with the city enforcer who said that as long as there were efforts being made to clean it up, that he would not take further action. And he did, two weeks later. Now, I know there's some of you here that want to point out the 64 pictures. And I would be happy to look at those. But I would like for you guys to focus on what it looked like on 9/4. Not what it looked like when- before I got the bill or the notice. Because he drafted that notice on the 13th. That's the date of the letter was written. I'm sure that I didn't get it till at least the third week of June, if not quite possibly the fourth week of June. I'm not sure what date that was.
It says you signed for the letter on the 17th, which would've been two weeks.
Well, it must've been the Monday.
It was- it was sent- it was sent on the 13th.
It was drafted on the 13th.
And you sent- you signed for the letter on the 17th.
Which is Thursday.
So that's four days.
Which was probably Monday.
That's four days between.
Okay.
And then on- and then on July 1st, you spoke to the administrative assistant and you stated that the property was being sold on contract.
It was.
And you were going to go that day and look at the property and speak with the person who was buying the house. And she advised you that they would work with you as long as they saw progress in the cleanup. She will keep in contact with us as to what is going on with the property.
That-
But I- my thing is, I guess, if I- if I had received something from the city that you're in violation and they want to see progress, what one person sees as progress may not always be what the other one sees. So, in hindsight, it's always 20-20.
Well-
Do you agree that it would've been prudent of you to have kept in contact with Mr. Myers and with the ordinance enforcement department to make sure you were on the same page for that?
Well, honestly, to be honest with you-
Can you answer me, please?
Yes, I am. And to be honest with you, I would like for you to- I think it would've been prudent of Mr. Myers to have followed the old ordinance that said I should've gotten another- another- another notice. And he did not.
Well, there were three months- you had three months. And you did not make contact with him again during that three months.
But when he quit, you're right. I did not- I am busy. I have three kids. I have a lot of things, like everybody else here is. But had Dennis Myers followed the policy and sent me another statement and said- or even would've said, "You have 30 days," or "You have 60 days." At that point, I could've said, "Okay, I'm not going to be able to get to this in 30 days. So I have one of three choices. I can make this a priority that absolutely everything else is going to the side until this is finished." Or I would've had the opportunity to find someone to clean that up. Or I would've been- had the choice of letting the city clean it up. But I wasn't given that choice. I was not notified that my, "As long as we're seeing progress, it's okay," was up.
May I ask you a question? Why did you let it get to that shape we're starting with?
I did not.
Well, how did it get that way?
Well, it's your- it's your property.
It's your property, correct?
We had sold it on contract.
Answer my question. It's your property, correct?
Well, we sold it on contract, so I'm not sure the legalities of that.
It's still your property.
It's still yours.
Okay. Well, that's what you're saying.
So you had three months from the time- It says right here, Mr. and Mrs. Myers had over three months to clean up the property. Says right here.
It is your property.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Actually, we had less than that because he actually sent the first work order, the first work authorization on the 11th of June, July, which is-
But he sent the notification of the ordinance violation in June.
In June.
And then, so it was actually-
June 17th, correct?
Almost four months.
June 17th, July, August, September.
End of September. So it was three months.
Well, he sent the work authorization on the 5th of September, which would've been just two and a half months. And it's just two weeks, but still, two weeks is a lot of time.
It takes a long time after that notice goes out for them to get you on the list.
And they. And I'm not trying to say that or diminish that in any way, shape, or form.
But as far as I- and I think we discussed this in our second conversation. The property is still yours. When you sell a property on contract, your name is still on the deed. It's still on the mortgage. You are in essence a mortgagie.
Okay.
So you- and it is still your responsibility to maintain or to keep track of that property and know. I mean, you don't just sell something on contract and not- And it doesn't revert to that person. Because when they quit paying, it reverts right back to you.
To get back to your question.
Yes, ma'am.
Why I let it get that far. Josh had drug out a lot of things out of the house that I was not aware of. And he left it there.
Who's Josh?
This- he is-
The contract seller or buyer.
Contract buyer. Which I know that doesn't mean it's his counsel, but I do not-
But you still own the property and you're still responsible for it?
I understand that. So I was just answering your question. I just wanted to make sure that I answered my question.
Okay, thank you. Okay, does anybody got anything to say to her?
Well, I do know, yes, I do have a couple things. Because you had mentioned that our costs were exorbitant.
Yes, I did.
We did- the charges for the people that worked were less than their pay, including fringe benefits, that was less than the pay.
What is that pay, actually? Would you know?
I don't- I can't tell you exactly, but we did- but it is less than their pay. And I think you've made some accusations that we have the representative of the transfer station, Tom. Do you- is there something you would like to say? I mean, you've been accused of misrepresenting and misweighing and we've-
Along with Tom here.
I think- I think he deserves it.
Along with all the rest of them.
And yes, I think.
Uh, my name's Tom Creach. I've worked at the transfer station for 23 years. The mayor asked me today, he said, "Would you mind coming by counsel and describing procedure with the transfer station when it involves a property cleanup?" Um, again, I've done this for 23 years. And this is what happens. Either Daryl or his assistant calls me and says, "We have a property cleanup today at 500 Central Avenue. We'll be using truck number 11. Be more than one load." So what we do, when that truck comes across the scale, and when I say scale, for the mayor, our scale is certified. What that means, that means certified by the state of Indiana. When you charge by weight, it's got to be certified, okay? So they scale it. We have a ticket and put on there, first load. That load, end of the day, one of the drivers comes in and says, "This is what we had." Our- this property is at 500 Central Avenue. I take the three scale tickets. I total them up, put the weight on there. And if there's any other items, and I'm not familiar with this lady or she said we have a lot of customers, whatever the tires were on there, that they tell me, that's what it was. Now, I'm trying to be civil. It's irrelevant how much we handle, okay, at the transfer station. You don't get a bonus if you handle more. If the city charges someone more, that's totally irrelevant. But I'd just like for the folks to understand on property cleanup, this is a procedure. We have a lot of issues in town. And I'm not trying to get involved in this because I'm not familiar with it, but I cannot see like any reason any of the street department employees would want to not be honest about it. Because it's- it doesn't make them any money. Just like people said about our rates. Well, we don't arbitrarily just say this is what it's going to be. City council sets its rates. But again, the reason the mayor asked me was our procedure. This is- this is a procedure we have on cleanups. Usually, I don't even know where it is till the end of the day. And they give me the address.
Now, Tom, on the- when you weigh those trucks, you weigh them when they come in?
Yeah.
They empty them and then you weigh them again, right? For each load?
I'm sorry?
For each load?
Yeah, we have separate tickets in the end of the day. We set them aside and we total those up.
And you total the three, yeah.
That's where the- that's where the weight comes from.
On the certified scale.
Now, insofar as much as, you know, what is in that load? I don't have a clue. You know, we don't go through that. The tires they do take out because it goes in a separate area. But in- you know, I'm not trying to offend anybody or accuse anybody, but the- that's how we handle the property cleanups. And it does take a lot of time and does cost a lot of money. Any more questions for me?
Actually, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so you mentioned that you weigh trucks. You weigh this stuff. You- do you weigh that? Is that pretty much your common procedure?
Depends what you have. Like, we have a- all you folks know, we have a itemized price list. If you come in, it has three mattresses, that's $21.
And you would write that, correct? You would, you know, mark, "Three mattresses, $21."
On your receipt, which is three copies. I keep one, Rosemary gets one, the customer gets one, which they sign. It has- it has a price list, which were required by law, what it cost.
Okay, well, I'd like to show you something real quick. I wasn't going to bring these up, but since you did. Can you tell me, sir, what was dumped there?
I don't have a clue.
Yeah, because nothing's marked, right?
Ma'am, it says Denny. Price is $20.
Right.
There's the date. And there's somebody's- the customer's signature.
Right, right. So you don't always fill this out? Is that because it's not filled out? There's nothing marked up here. There's no miscellaneous items. Let's go through it. There's no bags under 25 pounds. No contact.
Virginia, we're going to have to close. We got to-
I understand. Yeah. There's nothing marked here. It just says that there's $20.
This is a numbered receipt, okay? You've been in, you've been in. You come in, I say, "Mike, it's going to be $10." I write 10 on it. He signs it, dated. I get a copy, Mike gets a copy, Rosemary gets a copy. Because the state board of town audits me. Do I check each one of these or what?
So you- there's- you don't have any idea? I mean, none of this top is filled out at all. Here's one for $45 total. And nothing on the top is filled out. It's just- just $45.
And let's see.
Cash.
Bill.
Denny, Bill, and the date.
Oh, okay. So this person signed this receipt saying he paid us and we took his money, correct?
Apparently so.
Well, okay.
And they didn't disagree at that time?
And you don't disagree at the time with what was taken?
Um, they have no reason. I mean, they don't always check their policy.
It's not possible to sort through a dump truck and itemize every single item that was hit or a pickup load.
No, but there's a pickup truck load here at 950 Cubic Yard that's charged per cu, $12 per cubic yard, and the county in 950 Cubic Yard for the city. There's a spot there. I'm just, I'm not trying, I think you did a great job, I'm not, I'm not trying to be, I'm just trying to show that-
And this is the reason why, this is the reason why we have people sign the receipt.
And I really feel terrible, but-
No, I'm not bothered.
I got a question. Are you trying, like, if you, if you're saying that you brought five mattresses?
I don't know what they brought.
You're saying that, if, if, I brought a pickup truck tomorrow with three mattresses, would the, would the boxes be marked three mattresses? If that's all I had?
If you had three mattresses, I'd probably put $21 in circulation. But it's right on here.
Yes, sure.
Mattresses, $7 each.
Oh, okay. So it's not, you don't really say that, like, three mattresses, you just, it's just a guideline to-
I see, it's like, that way, you know, when you come in, as I said before, you don't, you don't, you know, I don't accept these prices.
No.
City coun, city council does, okay? If you come in, you have three mattresses, uh, it's $21. It, it sure got in a charge, and then you sign it.
I don't know anybody who would keep a-
Saying you paid me.
Receipts of trash.
And there's the date.
I'm trying to think of one.
And I agree with what David said down there, you know, when a person gets charged, he's okay, and I paid this bill, so I agree with this, so.
Well, he may have agreed with the price, I mean, you don't, when you go down to the city dump, I've dumped down there before, and, um, you know, I've been with people when they, as they've dumped, and they, you know, you don't get the opportunity to say, you know, they, they just say, okay, here's this, you know, you take, you take them for their word, and I'm not trying to say that they are-
But you've already made some of those in senior age.
Dennis Myers, yes.
Just a minute.
And the street department, yes.
My policy, we do not surprise anybody. We tell you what it's gonna be before you unload it.
That's correct.
That's not been my experience, but I-
We don't just let you unload it and then say, it's $50. That doesn't happen.
You back it in, and you back, I've been there.
Let's go ahead and get on with the meeting. Thank you, Virginia.
Nice, are we good?
Yeah, thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, we'll go on down to item D, Resolutions 2019-53 through 59, Rosemary?
Resolution 2019-53 is a resolution to reimburse police telephone an amount of $829. Resolution 2019-54 is a resolution to reimburse fire department heads in the amount of $60.94. Resolution 2019-55 is a resolution to reimburse council other contractual services in the amount of $250. Resolution 2019-56 is a resolution to transfer $26,320.94 from general fund to first aid non-reverting fund. Resolution 2019-57 is a resolution to transfer $4,050 from park pool employees to the restricted holiday events fund. Resolution 2019-58 is a resolution to transfer $1,000, $100,000 from local rodent street to the local matching fund. And resolution 2019-59 is a resolution to transfer $300,000 from MBH restricted to the local matching fund.
I have one quick question, Rosemary, on item 57, uh, restricted holiday events, what does that mean?
Um, there are, um, we have restricted funds, and we have non-reverting funds that we receive donations, and we're limited on what we use it on.
Okay, I got you, that's what I wanted, thank you.
Uh, I move we pass resolutions 2019-53 through 59.
Second.
You have a motion to second to pass resolutions 2019-53 through 2019-59. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. On these transfers, uh, Rosemary, can we do any of them together?
Well, we should be able to do pending ordinance, um, 3512, 13, 14, and 15 together, if it's okay with the council. Pending ordinance 3512 is a ordinance to transfer $360 from CCB construction on Grand Avenue to engineering cost, and transferring $29,640 from Grand Avenue construction to professional services. Pending ordinance 35, 13 is an ordinance to transfer $5,800 from MBH other materials to MBH vehi, to insurance, I lost my place. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Vehicle repair and insurance. It, it, it's a happy day for you.
Yes.
Second transfer. You're gonna get that in.
Isn't that just the opposite? Because it's from-
From other materials.
Oh, okay.
You're right.
$5,800 to insurance, and from other materials, $9,200 to vehicle repair. Sorry about that. Pending ordinance 3514 is a ordinance to transfer $5,000, no, $8,500 from other contractual to overtime, and transferring $3,400 from department head to overtime. Pending ordinance 3515 is a ordinance to transfer $1,000 from other employees to sanitation within city hall.
Second.
I'll make a motion.
Yes.
You ready?
Yes.
Second.
He already got you.
To pass pending ordinance is 3512 through 3515.
Okay, was there a second?
Yes, David.
Okay, we have a motion to second, pass pending ordinance 3512, 13, 14, and 15. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there, uh, is there a motion to suspend the rules and move on to third and final?
Seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and go to third and final. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we need a, need a motion to pass pending ordinance 3512, 13, 14, and 15 on third and final.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass pending ordinance 3512, 13, 14, and 15 on final, on third reading. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much.
And if we can, if we can take pending ordinance 3516, 17, and 18 together as well. There are additional appropriations, so you'll have to have a public hearing.
Can you explain?
Um, pending ordinance 3516 is an ordinance for an additional appropriation in the amount of $45,000 for the riverboat fund for the sidewalk, and $5,800 for other equipment. That, there was actually money that was approved last year for the equipment on the fire trucks, and it, the bill did not get turned in until January, so it's, and it was not, um, rolled over from last year. Pending ordinance 3517 is an ordinance for additional appropriation in the amount of $15,000 for the airport on other contractual.
It goes to the airport fund, right?
That is within the airport fund, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, they have that money there available. Pending ordinance 3518 is a ordinance for additional appropriation on the cumulative capital development fund, professional services for $40,000.
What are we doing with that?
Um, that is a little bit of everything combined between, um, um, Grand Avenue, some of the sidewalk, um, engineering, and then also the engineering on, uh, community crossings and the Pacer grant, so all of that.
Um, on 3516, the $45,000 for sidewalk, what is that for?
That is what we've paid to date, or, um, that is what we've paid, and also to, I think, to transfer back to cumulative capital, just a second.
For which sidewalk? Is that for grand, or is that for down here from 35?
When I talk sidewalk, that is, um, from 3rd to 5th, and then 5th to 9th.
9th, okay, okay.
None of it's been separated out, even though it is through two DES numbers.
Okay, okay, that's, yeah, that's good, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the meeting and open up for the public hearing. On pending ordinance 3516, 17, and 18, so I'll go ahead and close it for, for an open, the public meeting. Is there anyone here to speak on these, on this issue? Anyone?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and open it back up to the council. Is there a motion?
I move that we pass pending ordinance 3516 through 3518.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed, okay, is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second to suspend the rules. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Need a motion to pass on third and final.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second, I mean, a motion to second to pass pending ordinance 3516, 17, and 18 on third and final. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much.
Anything additional we can take in groups? Anything else we can take in groups?
The next three will be taking in groups if we can. Uh, ordinance, pending ordinance 3519, 3520, and 3521 is ordinance where, um, we are approving the attached amendments, agreeing to 1% paid increase for the transfer station, street park contract, and the first aid contract.
And this was per the contract agreement.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to second?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass pending ordinance 3519, 20, and 21 on first reading. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to suspend the rules and go to the third and final?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second to suspend the rules for pending ordinance 3519, 3520, and 3521. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Need a motion to pass pending ordinance 3519, 3520, and 3521 on third and final.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second to pass pending ordinance 3519, 3520, and 3521 on, on the third and final, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Carol?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have a request for a handicap parking space at 2120 Vermont Avenue. I've checked it, don't see a reason why not, and she did provide a letter from a healthcare representative.
Mr. Mayor, move to accept pending ordinance 3522?
Second.
We have a motion to second to pass ordinance 3522 on first reading, a handicap parking sign. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We need a motion to suspend the rules on, to go to third and final?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second to suspend the rules, to go to third and final reading. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it passes, we need a motion for third and final.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second to pass pending ordinance 3522 on third and final reading. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next 13 pending ordinances. Pending ordinance 3523, 24, 25, for 6, for 7, for 8, for 9, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35 are all salary ordinances. On pending ordinance 3523 is the cable TV salary ordinance, and the difference from last year is a 1% increase. Pending ordinance 3524 is the elected official salary ordinance, and the mayor got 1% increase, and the clerk treasurer $4,000. Pending ordinance-
And the council?
And-
Zero, right?
No, 1%.
Almost word.
The council got more, that is what it says.
Oh, wow.
Okay, the next change is first aid on pending ordinance 3526, they got 1% increase. The next, um, pending ordinance 3527, we got 1% increase. Pending ordinance 3528, park non-contractual, got 1% increase. And next one was 3530, street department, 1% increase. 3590 went, 3531 was transfer station, and 3532, the transfer station solid waste, they both got 1% increase. There was no changes on 3533 and 34. The pending ordinance 3535 was a 1% increase.
I'm getting tired of that sale.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion.
On second.
And a second.
Okay, we have a motion to pass pending ordinance 3522, 23, 24, 25, 26 through 35. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, is there a motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and go to third and final. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we need a motion to pass pending ordinance 3522 through 3535 on third and final.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass pending ordinance 3522 through 3535 on third and final. Any more discussion?
Oh my gosh.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Going down to old business. Going down to old business. We have pending ordinance 3510, the 2020 budget, this is the second reading.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, move to accept the pending ordinance 3510 on the second reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass pending ordinance 3510, the 2020 budget on second reading. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we need a motion to pass pending ordinance 3510, the 2020 budget on third and final.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to pass pending ordinance 3510, the 2020 budget on third and final. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Going down to miscellaneous business. Uh, miscellaneous, I'd like to just let you know that document shred day is October 12th, from 8:00 AM to 11:30 at the transfer station. This is the Fayette County residents only, no businesses. So again, it's a shred day, October 12th, 8:00 AM to 11:30 at the transfer station for county residents only, no businesses. Okay?
County residents only?
County resident, Fayette County. Fayette County, well, Fayette County is city residents.
Yes, okay.
Okay, has anything, got anybody, anything, anybody got anything under miscellaneous business?
Have breakfast, Rosemary.
Oh.
I do, Mr. Mayor. I'm not for sure if it's considered old business, since we just discussed it a lot, but I felt like we were kinda rushed to get to the end of Mrs. May's. But she didn't have time, I get that, we didn't have time to discuss it. I wanna get to all this stuff, figure we could bring them back up. Um, just for my opinion, which is my opinion, everyone's got one. Um, here's where I see this. Is there a ordinance violation? Clearly, there is. Were there communications made to, for them to do their due diligence? Clearly, there was. Whose fault does that have to lie back on? I can go both ways on that, but in reality, I think it's ours. If we're going to extend a timeline, then we should give them a timeline as well, and not just say, hey, we'll give you, what was the term, I don't remember the term used, I don't have it in front of me.
As long as there was progress.
As long as there's progress, but she showed progress because she dumped nine times at the transfer station. The intent of the ordinance is to, number one, clean up the city, which we need the ordinance, in fact. It needs to be there. But it also has to be common sense, if someone's doing their due diligence, that we give them their due diligence. But that being said, we should have established a timeline to go say, hey, yes, you are showing due diligence, we, we do need to establish a timeline, or else it'll never get done. But that's really our side that says, hey, we're entering into this, well, can you get it done by this date? And make that date, that's a drop dead date. And if you don't get it done by the drop dead date, here's what's gonna happen. I feel that was a failure that didn't take place.
Well, one of the reasons, Chad, if you, if you think about it, that's the reason we changed in the ordinance a little bit with-
I understand that, but this is-
Well, that's, that's the reason we're doing it, is because we're putting all the burden on the street department, because, and Dennis, because they have no idea. When they pull up to a place and you say, clear it out, they don't, they don't know what's valuable, what's not valuable, what's trash, what's not trash. They're there, they see a property, they start to clean it up.
That's irrelevant, this is-
Well, yeah, yeah, it is.
This is common courtesy, because they, she called us to work with it.
90 days is pretty common courtesy. And if, and if someone, because when she talked to me, she said something to the effect, my husband could have cleaned this up in five hours, by himself. Well, then why didn't he do it? In this way, it would not, uh, this, that way, it would not have come to this point.
I understand that, but we don't drive over people for one.
Well, we didn't, we didn't drive over people.
Okay. They extended, Carol, I know you can't ask this question, because you didn't do it, but they extended the, they said they'd give you time, right?
Yes.
How much time?
He never said, he said as long as there's progress being made.
That's my problem, that's my problem. As long as progress, was you making progress?
Yes.
So therefore, I don't care what we say, that kind of- So therefore, I don't care what we say, that comment, I agree with you on that hand.
Different people have different concepts.
But if we give them, if we give them extension, they need to work with that extension. And that's my point, I agree though, the ordinance is in place, well, we need the orders, I'm not arguing that. And there is times when you have to be that way.
And that's the reason, starting in, I see the second council meeting is the twenty-first. And that's the reason on the twenty-first, we're going to be giving tickets. Because this way, we're going to turn it into the court system and let the courts decide that's okay. Because we put too much pressure on the police and the street department to figure out what is just like, you know. I'll tell you what I was offended about, I don't know if it's still there or not, but I know, I was a service member. And when I seen the American flag, just the way it was presented on that wall, that kind of upset me a little bit. Because if you were cleaning up that property, why is that American flag up there tore up like that? That should have come down and been disposed of.
I agree with that, I'm not saying anything, but that's the ordinance.
And so, I figure there's things that we could have seen without guessing. The twenty-one tires, why is the twenty-one tire still there? They said there was only three or four. All I can go, go by is what the transfer station counted.
That is irrelevant to the point that we gave them an extension without a timeline. And I agree, trust me, I'm not arguing, because I agree with you, and the flag ticks me out too. But that's irrelevant from what I'm hearing, because if we're going to give an extension, we need to set a deadline for that extension.
Well, it's like sometimes, what does it mean when your wife says, I need five more minutes to get clean up?
Well, my point, my point is-
I don't just don't drive over people like that.
My point is, and you stated that too, there's blame on both sides.
There is.
Yeah, there was a lack of communication on your, and we talked about that. And, you know, that if it were me, I would have gotten back and said, I wouldn't have just taken it upon, it just-
Well, see, what I see-
But I am more familiar with the process than most people.
What I see we're doing is, is we're putting on, we're putting the burden to prove that I'm cleaning my property on the city and not on the person that should be doing it.
Well, I think they should have maintained-
But I don't think that's the question that he was, he was just saying, and she's agreeing, that what was to be done is correct, is that when you give them a timeline, you give them a timeline, don't say as progress goes. Because then you don't, you don't know.
She was making progress, clearly.
And that's the reason, I agree, and some of the time this month, we're changing it. Because now we're going to turn it, because now when he gives you that ticket, you only got, you got five business days. At the end of five business days, you go to the, the next ticket you get, you go to the courthouse.
I do want to make one thing, I do want to make one thing.
Well, I mean, there's mistakes made, but I don't think they made a mistake. I think the mistake made was not getting the property cleaned up. You had ninety days. And to sit back and say, I'm going to take five tires to the transfer station today, and I'll take the other sixteen another day.
You took nine loads.
Yeah, I'm just using, I'm just using the twenty-one tires. There was twenty-one tires that were taken to the transfer station by the street department.
I just wonder how much time we're supposed to allow people. I mean, three months sounds like a long time to me.
It is, but that's the point, because we need to establish a timeline. I think it's a standing discipline, the ordinance is thirty days, am I wrong? But if you are, if you agree to extend a timeline and don't give them a timeline, how can you hold accountable? Well, but in fairness, guys, related to Dennis, he does not have the time to get around to eating on his property. I'm not blaming anyone, I'm just, boy, it is, if you're going to establish, if you're going to give someone extra time and not establish a timeline, yeah, we are at fault, don't care how busy you are, that's, that's like us trampling over people, I don't, I don't agree with that.
I disagree with you, that's okay.
Like I said, it's my opinion, everyone's got one.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
Well, in all fairness too, they were sort of in the middle of the new implement, implementation of the ordinance. But it's kind of like when you owe somebody money, you know when the due date is. I think, you know, keeping in contact with, and maybe making sure that you're both on the same page.
Can I say something?
Yes, come on up. You got to come up, introduce yourself.
I'm Bill Mayes.
Oh, get up here and do it.
I'm Bill Mayes, and on this ordinance that you're passing, okay, you got, you say you can't get stuff cleaned up in thirty days, that's put a burden on the city. Do you think you're going to get it done in five days when you can't even clean your own stuff up? Ever since the city's been around, I just curious.
We do the best, they do the best we can.
We do the best we can too, buddy.
Well, okay. People get one, that's the word they got. Okay, is there anything else?
I got the last word.
Yeah.
And I'm looking at a bunch of last words.
Can I say something?
Yes, come on up. You got to give your name.
I'm Bill Mark. I've lived in this city for seventy years. I voted, and I've decided today what vote I'm going to take in this, this city this year. But we, I've studied, I'm a pastor also.
What is your name, sir?
Bill Mark.
Okay, I know.
Yeah, you know churches, yes. I'm a pastor also. And I noticed that our city is number one in unemployment in ninety-two counties, you know that, don't you? Four point seven.
We are what?
Number one in ninety-two counties, yes, we are.
Number one in what?
Unemployment rate. Four point seven in our county. I was brought up very poor, very poor. Like your mom, we was clean, we was clean. Now, you're coming up with these ordinance, and you're going to find people right on the spot, fifty dollars for things. You know what fifty dollars are to a lot of single parents?
A lot.
Yeah, a lot. But you have no, listen, the Bible talks about charity, and I don't care if you don't like about the Bible or not. Charity is the most important thing. Compassion is the most important thing. And you're putting burdens on people that's working for seven something an hour, single parents, living in this city, trying their best to make a way. Maybe you, some of you maybe not ever been poor, I don't know, but I know what it is to go to bed hungry and go to school hungry, I know all about that. I've worked ever since I was eleven years old. I worked my life through life. And now you want to bring up these pity party things, they're not cleaning up, they're not cleaning up. I know there's things wrong in this city. I've been here for seventy years, I know, I know there's things wrong in this city. But when you put a burden on a poor person that can't even afford to get his life, I've been there. I've been there where I couldn't even buy a fifty cent tar to put on my car. Or I couldn't get the money to buy a starter, even though I was working. I know all about those things. But you sat on your seats of do nothing, and you bring in all these ordinance against people that trying their best to live. And let me say something to you, not only do the wealthy vote for you people, but the poor people vote for you people too.
That's right.
You're right.
It's not just the wealthy that vote for you people in this, in this city and on this council. There's people that's poor. I've voted ever since I've been eighteen years old. I was a vice president of the union in this, in this city. I voted. I want you to do the right thing. Have compassion when you come to people. Don't slam them a fifty dollar ticket because they ain't got this done or ain't got that done. There's a coordinate thing, there's things that happen. You can recommend people by saying, hey, you know, can you get this done at a certain time before you find them?
And, Mr. Mark, and that's what's going to be done. They're not just going to walk up today and say, hey, you got a ticket.
Well, I hope so.
They're going to look, they're going to come up to you, Dennis Myers is going to come up to you and say, hey, when can you get this cleaned up? I'll be back in that time, then you'll get your fifty dollar ticket.
Can you guarantee me that somebody, some of the officials ain't going to get mad at somebody and say, hey, I'm going to give them a ticket because I'm upset with them? Can you guarantee you that?
I can guarantee that.
No, you cannot.
Officials can't give a ticket.
You cannot do that, that's right, you can't.
The officials can't give tickets.
We can't give tickets.
I know you can't.
The only person that can is Mr. Marsh.
I know that. That's what I'm saying, can you guarantee that somebody don't get mad or say, hey, this is certain, certain? Or somebody, one of the police officers ride around, they're upset with somebody and say, hey, we're just going to Dennis and have this done. See, the idea of it is, when you work in the city, I've worked here, well, I worked here until eighty-four, then I drove buses, I worked all over. Last job I had was in Richmond for twenty-three years. But this is my hometown. This is where I was born.
This is where I was born.
This is where I was raised up. This is where I went to school. This is where I want to stay. But when you come against poor people that, and again, if you're going to give them time, that's great.
He's not going to be a Gestapo guy, he's going to give you time. But you know, there's a thing though, you can give people too much time. You know what I mean?
Sir, may I say this, you're, and I understand where you're coming from. But I understand that people, it's going to present a burden, but what about the person who lives next door to one of these homes? That they've just, I mean, it's not something that happens overnight. And we've not enforced it in the past, and we have investigated, or not us, but the ordinance department has investigated over two hundred and twenty locations this year alone for ordinance violations. And it's not, they're not, it's not getting done. People are not, unless you have some kind of consequence, they're going to say, I'm not going to do it. And we, and I've heard people that have said in the city since we made this announcement, and we've not changed the ordinances. People think we have voted in a new ordinance, we have not done it. We are just going to, we are just going to enforce them. And I've had, I've heard people say, they're not going to do it, I'm not going to worry about it. And that's been, that's been the mentality, that's been, you know, if we're not going to get consequences for it, we're not going to worry about it.
Yeah, I understand.
And I love this city too, I've lived here seventy-two years. I was born and raised here, I went to school here, I want to stay here, my kid, my daughter's here, my grandkids are here. But I want this city to be, when somebody drives through it, I want them to see a beautiful city and not one that has a trash problem.
Well, first of all, to have people come to this, you got to have a place to bring in people that wants to, that has jobs in this city, which our young people are driving to Greensburg and Rushville and Richmond because there's no jobs in this city.
Well, and that's true, but I-
There are no jobs in this city, so, you know.
There are jobs in this city.
It's a, you don't want to penalize one person because of another. You don't want to do that.
That's what Mark Melnick commented.
Yes.
We have done our homework on this ordinance program, and it's working for other cities. And if it's working for other cities, it will work with us.
Well, everything that works for other cities don't work for all cities.
Well, you got to take one problem at a time, but we have to do something. We can't just let it go on and on and on and on.
You brought up something about being number one in unemployment. One of the things they say unemployment is, if you got a dirty city, they don't want to locate there. So you have to do one or two, you've got to do things, because it is, like Diana says, you may take care of your property, but would you want a guy next door, his trees and limbs and everything growing over on you? He throws mattresses out in the yard near, near your house? You wouldn't like that either.
That decreases the property value of the property around.
Take care of the city's property too.
Yeah.
I'd mow the city's property, I'd clean my gutter or water flow out in front of my house if it wasn't going in my garage. I've done that myself. So it's, and you say, you want the city to look pretty to bring in jobs? Are you going out, how many went out and absolutely talked to people about bringing in jobs into this? Good for you, Chad.
So far.
Okay.
Many times.
Well, I'm glad.
And I did too.
It's a, it's a thing, I'm glad that you're going to give people a chance, not just flop it on to them, because
This was ninety, this was ninety days.
There's so many people.
It was yesterday.
And like Chad said, you got to have a timeline. You got to say, if the guy said, well, as long as you're making progress, you're all right.
Every situation's different.
If you make progress, you're all right.
Every situation's different, and we have to take them one at a time.
No, you need to say the date, you need to say the timeline.
We can do that, we got to do something.
If they had been making progress for three months, why was it not complete?
It's getting cleaned.
I know, what has been?
Progress, you got it, stand by what the man said.
For three months, if you were working all the time, then you should have had it done.
I want to add something to you.
I got to say, you just keep saying three months, but it was not actually three months.
Hey, that's her time.
It was, the ordinance, the seventeenth of June, he sent, he sent the first work authorization to the street department, or actually, I think it's to the police department, on July eleventh, that is not three months.
When did they come?
No, but you were notified on-
On June seventeen.
You were notified, you signed for the letter on June seventeen, June seventeen, and the work was done on September twenty-third. That's three months.
But if you look at the pictures, there was huge improvements made between June fourth, which is the first set of pictures that you have, and September fourth, it was drastically cleaned up. And I don't care, you know, that if you go to a property that has trash, and you want to clean up that trash, that trash should be cleaned up. They have no business going on to the front porch and taking chairs off the front porch. That is not trash, that was not done, that was actually chairs. And the only reason that they were taken out of Mr. Lyer's mouth himself was because they were office chairs. That is not in this ordinance, that is not against this policy, and it should have never been taken. And your policy actually defines debris as things that are broken down or destroyed. Those barrels were not broken down, and they were not destroyed. And those tomato cages were not broken down, and they were not destroyed. The grill that they took out of our backyard that was permanent structure, that they took out of the ground, they have no business doing that, that's theft. And then they charged me two thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars, and they never cleaned up the trash.
Okay.
I was just going to say, with this ordinance preventing people from throwing out those first few tires in their backyard is what we want to try to prevent, we want to try to stop that from getting to the point where it's one of these cases that, that have to be the thirty days.
Do you know how much it takes to dump a, how much money they charge you for one?
Three dollars. Three dollars.
I thought it was eight.
No, it's three, it's three.
It's three.
It's three, unfortunately, unfortunately, that's why we've gotten to the point where it's just four, and then four more, four more, unfortunately.
As you're talking about, as you're talking about the city being dirty, bringing jobs in, you know, the people in the city being dirty, and then you don't got your house cleaned, and then you're pushing everybody else to get their house cleaned, you said you tried, that's what we're doing.
Can I say something?
Go ahead, Catherine.
And I'll be quick, I know we've been here a long time. Catherine Good, I'm superintendent of the Parks Department. Carol asked me to be here today, and since you brought up my facility several times as an example of criticism, I wanted to speak to that, because I know they chose some photos. Our Parks Department has three full-time employees. Three. We manage a hundred and fifty acres of parks, over eight parks throughout the city. You took photos down at Babe Ruth on the east side of the park where nobody uses it. I think, I think we all know that. If you, you didn't take pictures of the other seven fields that people use.
Join the group.
So.
Yeah, it's just like with this particular property, they didn't take pictures of the side yard or the front of the house.
I'm proud to say that in a hundred and fifty acres of park, you found that one example. So I just want to, I just want to bring some, some perspective to what was shown today, I don't want to get into this argument, but representing the park and having sat through this meeting, I just wanted to bring that up. So I think our parks look great, and that is an area that is not used, so if anybody saw those pictures at home, yes, it's on our agenda to clean up, but it is not something that is even near, no, it's not, it's not, it's not even near what anybody uses right now.
Nobody was in our backyard till the city showed up.
But, and I'm glad, and I bring that up, because if you do see things, like Sunday, I got a call from our guy who works weekends. We took fifteen rolls of carpet that somebody dumped down at Smalley's. Last month, we took fifteen mattresses out of Smalley's. We clean up people's trash, and we pay to dump it at the transfer station. And we're the Parks Department, because people dump their trash throughout our parks. You also sent a photo of a chair that's been dumped down at Babe Ruth. It's on our list to pick up tomorrow. So if anybody watching has a concern about the park, just call us. So if anybody watching has a concern about the park, just call us. We're on it, we will get with it. I just talked to Chief McQueen about parking out at Soccer, because I got a Facebook message about it. So we're pretty easy to work with, and I think we're very responsive, and I just, since I've been here this long, I just wanted to add my little perspective to the comments about the park facilities.
Thank you.
As far as I'm concerned, if someone sees any city could, uh, maintained property that does need attention, call us. It goes both ways. The ordinance enforcer, they can call the ordinance enforcer and say, hey, this needs to be attended to. And that should be, it should be, as far as I'm concerned, that should be treated in the same vein.
And that's the, well, right back down to what he said, when you say you're going to work with the guy, you work with him, you don't come over and cut his head off and say, oh, we work with you, you know, you, you work with him.
I have three weeks from the time, at best, from the time that that first, that notice was written, and the time that Dennis Myers sent the, or from the time I received it to the time that he actually sent that first work authorization. It was not, it was not three months, it was three weeks.
But it was three months from the time that you received it to the time that the work was done.
I think we just worked on the timeline already.
Yeah, I think we kind of exhausted that.
Three months is null and void, they avoided that with a verbal contract. The verbal contract was, we're extending the time. Three months is null and void, sorry. It doesn't hold up.
We didn't have that top priority.
We were making progress, we had made vast progress, and if you look at the pictures on your June chart, and compare them to nine four, and I know it's easy to confuse those because I myself did as I was looking through there, because the nine and the six is easy to transpose, but if you look at the pictures in June, and then you look at the pictures in September, there's a huge amount of difference. There's tons of trash that is gone, that was cleaned up. And so while I understand that you say that, oh, well, if her husband could have done it in five hours, why didn't he do that? Well, he was down and he called me on his way out with the, with the last load, and he said, I have maybe one more load left. And he said, and I'll, and it's, and it's all, it'll all be cleaned up. The side of the house, we had sprayed all the way around it, the weeds were all dead, the backyard, the weeds were high in June, but we sprayed all of those, and had, they